But we did it anyway, and it was a productive meeting, and she is jumping into learning our contracts and our grievance and arbitration processes. And I'm looking forward to good work from Angela as we move forward. So thank you for attending today, Angela.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Appreciate that, all the good work and being on board. Very good. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. And we're gonna, are we ready to go? Wow, you're quick. I'll call the meeting of the Safety and Security Committee, January 21st, 2023. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Windmiller.
President.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Mound.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Pistello.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Gladney. Commissioner Johnson. You may proceed.
Thank you. Was there any speaker cards submitted?
No comments were submitted pertaining to safety and security.
Very good, thank you. At this time, approval of the minutes of October 6th, 2022, of the Safety and Security Meeting. Is there any corrections to be made to the minutes? If not, I'll need a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Tell me.
Have a motion and a second? And we need a roll call or just an eye vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 O's, ayes have it. Next on the agenda, the Secured Platform Project Update. Mr. Scott, I know you're anxiously waiting to tell us what we're doing.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Roach, thanks for having us. I brought a few friends with me this morning as well, so that you can meet them as we talk about where we are and where we're going with this project. So I would first like to remind you, so the topic of this update will be about the fencing and the gating in the closed circuit television program, or enhancements and reconfiguration at the platforms. So I think it is fitting to kind of introduce to you, now that we've secured HNTB and we've begun to work with them, to present to you who these people are and what their roles are and how we're moving this forward. So I'd like to start on the ByState Development side. Obviously, everyone knows Mr. Chris Paylor. Chris is the Vice President of Capital Programs for ByState Development, and he is serving on our SPP team as the executive engineering support and an executive engineering support role, helping us overseeing the work of our engineers. Mr. Tim Nutler, who some of you probably are also aware of or have heard from in the past. Tim is the Senior Director of Capital Projects for ByState Development, and he is ByState's Lead SPP Project Engineer on this endeavor, representing our interest. Ms. Kelly Haydenjek is also a ByState Development Engineer Project Manager, and she is assigned in that role to the SPP project. And before I get any further with acronyms, I just want to remind everybody that when we refer to SPP, it stands for Secured Platform Plan. So I will use that a lot, just out of habit, but that's what we're talking about. Mr. Scott Streckfuss is our SPP System Specialist, and he has been unbelievably instrumental in moving some of the technology, or if not all of the technology, along for the realization of the opening and the 24/7 usage of a real-time camera center here at our Metro Central Facility on Spruce, which I'll talk more about in just a second. But I just wanted to, on behalf of the SPP team, in prioritizing getting this real-time camera center open, Scott, I just wanted to say thank you. Your work has been extraordinary, and we look forward to working with you as we move this project forward. Mr. Andrew Giassi, who is my counterpart in public safety on the safety side, our General Manager of Safety, is leading all of the safety and regulatory compliance of the Secured Platform Plan. Not only does this have to be designed and built, but it also has to comply with all of the federal regulations and oversight that we are under as a transit operator. So that really does conclude the folks or the representation from ByState Development. I want to transition to our new partners with HNTB. They have been extraordinary to work with so far. Mr. Mark Grossenbacher, he is with our contracted engineering firm, HNTB. He is the lead here in the St. Louis office for HNTB, and he is also the project manager on the engineering side for the SPP project for HNTB. So with that, I'd like to take a few minutes maybe and turn this over to Mark, so that he could adequately introduce the additional HNTB engineers on the call, Selena Sire and John Pisa. And I would also ask Mark to speak a little bit about the contingent of subcontractors that have been put in place to fill out the overall design team from the HNT perspective. So Mark, if you don't mind taking a few minutes to go over some of that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I assume everybody can hear me okay? Do I get a thumbs up? Okay, perfect.
Yes, good.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks again, Kevin, and good morning, everyone. As Kevin said, again, my name is Mark Grossenbacher. I lead HNTB's operations here in the St. Louis office, as well as the project manager for the SPP project. We are very excited, as a firm and as a team, to be working with Metro/Bystate on this transformative project. I've born and raised in St. Louis and obviously have a vested interest in seeing good things happen in St. Louis that will set the tone for future success. And I think the SPP project is one of those things as we continue to expand the MetroLink system here in St. Louis and hopefully create a feeling of safety and security around the system and see ridership can start to return to the system as the city again returns to work and hopefully some normalcy after this pandemic. But I did want to introduce my two main counterparts on the team. As Kevin mentioned, Selena Sire works out of our North Dallas office, but is very familiar with the metro system, has been working on and off with, on MetroLink, quite honestly, both with HNTB and a former employer for many years on the communications and system side of things. Most recently, Selena was part of the, and HNTB as well, was part of the design team for the Cortex Infill Station. And we've also been working under an existing on-call contract on multiple task orders in helping you to upgrade your fiber backbone, deploy new cameras throughout the system and a lot of the system infrastructure to support the upgrade of a lot of that equipment. So Selena is very experienced and knows quite a few of the people that work on the ground here in St. Louis. John Pisa is an architect and will be overseeing the architectural side of things for HNTB. John works out of one of our East Coast offices, but has significant experience in light rail, heavy rail station design, as well as has some experience in upgrading stations similarly to what we're doing here with Metro in St. Louis. So it's John and Selena. I'm going to lean on them very hard during this, on their expertise during this project as we progress forward. But myself, John, and Selena are the main leadership from the HNTB side of the house. We also have several subconsultants, as Kevin alluded to, as part of our team. To be specific, there are five or six subconsultants. I'm sure as you guys have worked with many teams in the past, some of these names will be very familiar with, to you. So to start with, we're teamed with KAI. Some of you may know them as Kennedy and Associates, a local St. Louis architectural firm, which has significant experience with both Metro. And then HNTB has worked with them significantly in the Dallas area on the DART system as well. So, but KAI was part of our team for the Cortex Infill Station design, so we're continuing to move forward a portion of the team from the Cortex project here as well. ABNA, who some of you may know, is performing survey for us. ABNA has been working for the past couple months, actually out already doing survey. You may have seen them as you ride the system. But they are also a locally-based St. Louis firm that has worked significantly with Metro in the past. To complete utility relocations and coordination, we've got Convendio Engineering Systems onboard. Again, a local St. Louis firm, who has also worked with Metro on previous projects in the past. Some new firms that I don't know that have worked with Metro. We've got Custom Engineering, a Kansas City-based firm who we've worked with in the past. They have an office here in St. Louis. They'll be providing some electrical design support specifically on the high voltage side and offering some support on the lower voltage side as well. We also have Code Consultants, Inc., a national firm, but has a significant presence here in St. Louis. Will be providing some code review and helping us with the necessary egress analysis as we close the system. Obviously, you can understand that helping people to exit the system in an emergency situation, egress analysis is a big part of what we have to design here. So, so basically, the team is KAI, ABNA, Convendio, Custom Engineering, and Code Consultants with HNTB leading the team. Thanks for the opportunity to introduce ourselves and the team today. Kevin, anything else I can offer that you'd like me to speak to?
Well, I would anticipate as I move through my comments and we answer questions, there may be some things that you may have to help me answer, but I will.
Happy to.
Give it my best shot. So again, thank you, Mark, and thank you to the entire team. Just a couple of just notes as we talk about the total team build-out. As we've begun this overall project, especially over the last three to four months, we have worked to compile a monthly update, which has been disseminated to stakeholders. Ms. Haydenjek has been instrumental in helping put that together from the engineering side. So if you're not seeing that, we'll be more than happy to make sure that you get that. Again, it's a monthly update, so usually at the end of each month, that is sent out fairly routinely. It's bullet pointed. It includes the highlights and the accomplishments of that given month. Also, Mr. Ted Zimmerman, who is our Vice President of Marketing and Communications here at ByState Development, in partnership and conjunction with Vector Communications, who we have a long history with and have worked with on a number of different projects. They are leading all of the scheduling and all of our regional messaging engagements relative to secured platforms. And then as a reminder, several months ago, Mr. Giassi worked with our IT department to ensure that all of our commissioners have access to our hub, HUB. And that link was sent out to you via your ByState emails. The hub is our internal communications platform, where we highlight within the company and messaging different things. And then on the main page of the hub, if you take a look at the right side of that page, there is an index tree, and safety and security is listed as one of the options to link to. And then under that title is secured platforms. There is probably nine or 10 pages of blog already in place under the secured platform section of the hub. Andrew and the safety team work to update this almost daily. So I would remind you that that's there, and if at any time you can access that. Again, if you're having trouble accessing it, or you haven't done it, or you don't know how to do it, if you reach out to Mr. Giassi or I, we will be happy to walk you through that and also correct any issues that we have linking you to that page with our partnership with IT. And then I also would be remiss if I didn't ask you to recall that there is a corresponding and an integrating project working alongside of this overall SPP platform effort, obviously to realize a new fare collection system, which will be imperative in communicating with the gating system. And that project is being led by our Vice President of Administration, Mr. Tom Curran, and they are in consultation with a firm, Consult Hyperion, who you've approved and you're very aware of. So before I go any further, I have a lot of information to pass on to you. I've tried to pack as much information into three-hour time slot that the chairman has given me to speak. I'm just kidding, as possible. So before I go any further, are there any questions before we move on?
Any questions for Kevin before he moves on?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate, you know, Mark and his team, you know, coming in and updating on this. And then I guess my only thing is, just to keep it simple, I think we've been talking about this so many years now. Just a simple email, if you could, Talby, just of the timeline and as long as we're kind of sticking to the original timeline of when we expect things to be complete and things like that. Because there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot to this. I get it, you know, but it's, to me, it's probably the most important thing that ByState's doing right now, in my opinion.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Cox. That was my question I wanted to ask. Kevin, I got a note here. In your opinion, is the scheduling, are you staying on track? I mean, are we behind or are we right where you think we need to be?
Well, if you would indulge me just for a couple of minutes, I want to lay some things out for you. I mean, ultimately, yes, I think we are going to hit pretty close to what our anticipation is, but there are some things that you need to know and consider. Then I want to also talk about the solidification of the overall design schedule that we will be happy to send out to you once all of that has been put in place. So if you don't mind, can I delay that answer for just a moment?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so moving on, I want to talk first about closed circuit television. And there's another acronym that we use for closed circuit television, and that is CCTV. So I want to talk about the closed circuit television program, or the CCTV as it's commonly referred to. And that is our ability to view live security prioritized, and that's key, live security prioritized camera feeds from across our system. It's so vital and important for what I would deem to be sound and proactive security. And so, you know, we have a number, hundreds of cameras in place now, and SPP will realize the upgrade of that system and then the addition of additional cameras. So changes to our system to indulge gates and fencing and these CCTV upgrades will all act in a concert or together to support our overall security structure. Our security personnel, our law enforcement personnel, our patrons, and will work to provide a proactive perspective to making the system safer. So as part of SPP, upgrading the camera technology and adding additional cameras configured with a sound security perspective is actively moving forward. Now, the most visible accomplishment to that, to the lay observer thus far, is it will be the opening of a real-time camera center here at our Spruce facility. Now, this is a significant pivot point to the turning of our CCTV program from a reactive to a proactive security multiplier. So the center is up and running. It's operational 24/7, but it is a continual improvement on a daily basis. They've installed additional servers. They are moving camera feeds over on a routine basis. We are awaiting uninterrupted power supply system to be installed. So it is up and running and it is being used, but it is a continual improvement on a daily basis. And then to complement this, over the course of the next several months, we'll be relocating our Public Safety Dispatch consoles to an adjacent room here at Spruce. They're currently located at Ewing in our MetroLink facility here in Missouri. They will be moved over in the latter part of this year so that the total operation is positioned together, but with separate and defined roles and responsibilities, and that's very important. We're trying to isolate the importance of real-time proactive viewing of all of the CCTV footage. So as part of the CCTV improvements, we have put in place a CCTV manager to work in conjunction with Scott Streckfuss and his team, who will have ownership of facilities, platforms, and the parking lots, those cameras. And we're also working to put in place some additional technical staff to make sure that the system is inspected on a daily basis, and we make sure that any deficiencies within our system are expeditiously corrected. So as we talk about or conclude, you know, my discussion with you about CCTV, I want to highlight that also, in partnership with St. Clair County, we have taken those same closed circuit television feeds, and we have provided them or pushed them over to the four main Public Safety Dispatch Centers in St. Clair County, both CENTCOMs, Fairview Heights, and Belleville, so that those dispatchers now have the capability of viewing the live feeds on our system as well. Some of you might have seen a story recently on the news where a St. Clair County deputy was dealing with a call for a potential domestic disturbance on one of our platforms and was able to utilize the video to more efficiently and adequately dispatch security resources and law enforcement resources to handle that. So that is up and running. The next phase of that, we are in conversation and we're working with our partners at St. Louis County to provide the same feeds into their real-time camera center located in Clayton, Missouri. Any questions other than, the only thing that I would suggest is there are some of you, a few of you that have been in to see the initial operations of the real-time camera center, and I would open and invite anybody that wants to do that from our board to please reach out. We'd be more than happy to spend time with you and walk you through what is currently in place and what the ultimate vision is with the center. So are there any questions before I get into the engineering and the scheduling part of SPP? Are there any questions about closed circuit television, what that is, the difference between reactive and proactive viewing?
My only quick question would be, has it changed since I came down there and saw it? And what upgrades have you made since then?
Yes, it has changed. So when you were here initially on your tour, the entire Public Safety Dispatch component, including any viewing of closed circuit television from a security perspective, was located at our Ewing facility, all right? And that viewing was being done by active, working dispatchers who are answering phones, who are entering calls into our CAD computer, who are dispatching security elements, and are also tasked with the viewing of the real-time feeds. That is a very reactive approach, meaning they are not consistently engaged in those camera feeds. They are viewing them when they need to view them or periodically, okay? When their attention is drawn to them. That is not a, that is not a best practice use of CCTV technology.
I agree.
When we talk about all of the things that we've done, from personnel to all of the changes that we've made, and we talk about what we put in place to complement our overall security structure, above and beyond the skating and fencing project that we're working, our CCTV capability is without a doubt up at the very top of that priority. So the proactive, live, full-time viewing of those feeds is absolutely essential. So it has changed. The CCTV, the new CCTV center is here at Spruce, where my office is located. I'd be more than happy to have you and walk you through it.
Yeah, it's great to hear. Yeah, thanks, Kevin.
All right, so let's move into secured plat, I'm sorry, go ahead. Does somebody else have a question?
Before we get off of that, you know what my P is, is the communications. So I'm going to throw that out there before maybe one of the other commissioners that hasn't forgot about that yet. You know, that was part of the initial study that was done, and I know you have been working sometimes around the clock to get a solution to that done. And I just don't want to lose focus of that, because as we have discussed many times now, that is a key component to our officers' safety out there. So hopefully, that is still up on the front of the burner to come up with that solution, because it's a ticking time bomb, as we've talked about.
It is, there's no question. And I think what's important to highlight here is we have had this vision and have pretty much agreed to a 90-day pilot program to implement this one dispatch component for MetroLink. That pilot program would be designed to identify things that work well, things that don't work well, things that we would need to do to consolidate police dispatching for the three primary law enforcement agencies that provide services to MetroLink. Getting to that 90-day, that 90-day pilot, which we continue to push for, has been a difficult challenge. As you know, St. Clair County has the capability and is poised to host that 90-day pilot, and they're ready to move forward. There are a number of ancillary concerns across the law enforcement platform that have been certainly expressed, that quite frankly, police leadership and the politics within those jurisdictions need to work through. And we're hoping that that can be done quickly. We don't know what works and what doesn't work until we try. And so obviously, the 90-day pilot is certainly something that we will continue to prioritize and push for.
Well, and just to refresh the memory of some of the commissioners, that this has been a long-going process. As Kevin said, St. Clair County was, didn't want to do it, but when St. Louis County and St. Louis City didn't want to do it, St. Clair County took the lead and went through and jumped through a bunch of hoops that we were asked to over the last several years and put the plan in place to accommodate the needs, only to be stymied right now. So that's why I've asked Kevin and Talby to stay on this, because the problem is, is our law enforcement agencies cannot communicate directly to one another, which is definitely a safety issue. And that's why, as the Safety Committee, I think it's our responsibility to keep pushing this forward to whatever means we have to. Any comments on that? Any of the commissioners have any comments on that? Hearing none, okay, Kevin, go ahead.
All right, so I next want to talk about the question that you all have. I want to get through and outline for you what we've done thus far as far as bringing HNTB on board, what we've accomplished, what we're moving to. And then we'll talk about the overall design and timeline for the initiation of construction. When I do that, I'll also ask Tim to interject on some of your questions about the overall schedule, Tim Nutler, and how, what we're proposing to do, or what we're not even proposing to do, what we're moving and doing is going to be much more effective. So just let me, let me walk you through a couple of things real quick. Okay, so I want you to recall that as a true starting point, and we've presented this before, but as a true starting point to the current SPP implementation effort. So prior to Mr. Roach giving the directive to move forward with this, putting our SPP leadership team in place, our then and current general engineering contractor, who is WSP, they were tasked with the completion of an egress study. And Mark Grossenbacher earlier in his introduction mentioned the importance of egress studies. And they were also tasked with basic, very high-level conceptual designs at each of the 38 existing platforms locations. There are 39 total platforms in play, 38 are existing. One is under development. But this conceptual overview was then transferred, once our SPP leadership team was put in place, to the HNTB team after their services were procured to complete the design and the development in the scope of work to bid construction on this project, all right? So as our HNTB teams have come aboard, they have been working through analyzing those concepts and then working through the drafting of a project design schedule and an overall project management plan, all right? So as part of that, all of the agreements with those supporting subcontracting firms. Uh, that you were introduced to at the at the beginning of our remarks. Uh, have been secured by HNTB. Uh, the initiation and the continuation of light detecting ranging surveying that's. Uh, commonly referred to as LiDAR surveying at all of the existing thirty eight stations. Uh, this is progressing and this um uh for the overall mapping of those stations. And this is done uh through that process with minimal impact on the passengers. Or the totality of our Metro Link operation. HNTB is also uh currently actively investigating gating and fencing types. Uh, for presentation to our BSD SPP leadership team. I have stressed and I will continue to stress and I will not acquiesce from this position as the leader of this project. That any gating and fencing product must profoundly enhance the overall security at these locations. And in addition to that, be easily communicated with by the new fare collection system. And also have communication capability with our real time camera center. So we're continuing to work through that process and and vetting those products. And I'm hopeful over the next thirty to sixty days, we will be able to highlight uh a system that we think will work best. Uh, under the conditions that uh we're going to use them. Uh, workshops have been ongoing between by state development, uh, WSP and HNTB. And also consult Hyperion, who's the fair collection consultant. Uh, those are, those are being conducted to ensure that we're aligning all the various aspects of the project. Uh, the first of those workshops again. Uh, focused on the conceptual designs of each platform originally tasked to WSP. Uh, this also included the participation of an engineer from WSP who uh was part of that process. Uh, the second workshop was conducted uh jointly with the fair collection team, Tom Curran and his team. Uh, as a discussion on what our roadmap is to implement that technology with the overall. Changes that we're making with gating. And then there are are some additional, obviously, as we move through this process. Additional works uh shop schedule that focuses on overall scope of work. So I want to again stress that. Although our efforts live under an SPP title, one banner. That we have in fact, uh thirty eight existing and one pending individual locations. Uh, that will all be uniformly fenced and gated in the CCTV. CCTV technology upgraded and reconfigured. So as we work through this process, we also have to stay in constant marriage and incorporation with Tom Curran and the fair collection team. Now. Let me take your focus back specifically to the fencing, the gating and the cameras at each location. As I referenced, the first workshop that was conducted. Uh, focused on those initial concepts that were developed. Again, at a very high level set of project requirements. Um, and then when they were transferred to HNTB. Uh, as part of the progressive, progressing design phase. It was necessary to revisit or is necessary to revisit, and this is ongoing. Approximately twenty five percent of those stations. Due to the lack of emphasis on security in the initial requirements presented in the initial WSP task. So additionally, we have focused on true security enhancement. Those initial concepts did not meet our requirements for fair gate barriers. And that also resulted in the need to now reevaluate or reassess the impact on that initial. Egress analysis that uh Mark referred to. So uh in HNTB, in addition to HNTB, these engineers. Uh, have identified that there may be certain items originally assumed to be usable. Uh, at various platform locations that may need to be replaced during construction. Which was not accounted for, obviously, in the original design uh projections. We also found that addressing issues uh such as uh significant bike trail system or crossings. Uh, at several of our Illinois stations will require coordination with that jurisdiction. Uh, and the need to reconcept that those stations or relocate those crossings. So. As our team has worked through all of the aforementioned uh tasks. Uh, it has become very apparent to me as the leader of this team and also our engineering. Uh, group that uh if we approach this project in totality, meaning. We sit and we design every platform at the levels of. Design, the thirty to sixty to ninety five percent. And we wait for all of the surveying to be done in totality. Um, that. This project is not, would not be doable uh within the time uh parameters that was put out in the original. Uh, the original scope. So it it would delay in my estimation if we treat this entire project in totality. Uh, it would delay any ability to bid overall construction to the latter part of twenty five, two thousand and twenty five. So that's not going to work. So we uh went back to the engineers and we asked to um. Reevaluate what we think would be a very progressive approach to getting this done. Putting gates in sooner and then ultimately shaving uh time off of the total project in my estimation. And I'll ask Tim Nettler and Mark uh Grossenbacher to speak more to this in just a moment, but. In order to correct all these difficulties. Of thirty eight different locations and a one total design uh construction schedule. Um. And at the recommendation of the engineers, obviously, because I am not one. Uh, I'm moving this project forward on a phased or packaged schedule. Uh, that the engineers have shown will expedite the total project and allow a phase one of this project. To be bid, construction to be bid in July of this year. So when we talk about what what the initial phase would be. Or uh the initial phase one, we have asked the engineers uh to move forward with four uh platforms. Uh, these platforms are all located within the St. Clair County Transit District. And those are Jackie Joyner-Kersey, uh Washington Park. Emerson Park and Southwestern Illinois College or SWIC. Uh, these specific locations commissioners present little need to make major adjustments to the concepts. Uh, at that's locations and they provide a pathway. To realize, to realizing actual gating and fencing. In the CCTV upgrades and reconfigurations so that we can show significant progress quickly. Now. Although in the initial phase of this phase one, we will most likely not have realized connection with the new fair collection system. These locations, once they're constructed, will be fully operational from a security standpoint. Uh, through the utilization of the reconfiguration of some of the security staffing and how we use them. So phase one will also, this is important. Will also afford our teams the opportunity to to assess. That implementation as we move into additional phases of design. Now. Beyond package one. We'll design and build what I think potentially could be five additional packages. Uh, that could be adjusted as we add. Uh, more platforms perhaps to the package number one or package one or phase one. Would inevitably be the smallest package as a phased in approach. Uh, to getting this done. And then the subsequent packages would be larger. But it could be five additional packages, it could be less. To complete the full build out. So under our current projections, following this plan. And I'm going off of my interpretation of what I believe will happen. This will allow our current uh package. To be bid uh for construction in September of two thousand and twenty four. Which will now bring this total project from a very daunting. One kind of monster task back in line with some of the timeframe uh that we expect. So the idea is to show progress to the region, to to show the gating and the fencing going in. But not just putting the gating and the fencing in, but have it make a substantial security impact. Uh, and we think that we can do this through this phasal process. So. Um, what we're doing is, and this is a term that is stolen from one of my engineers. But we are creating a cascading effect, meaning as package one moves to uh bid for construction. Package two will enter the defined or the final design process, which will be about an eighty day time period. When package two uh moves to bid construction, package three will enter uh the the fi- the final design process. And on and on until we've realized full completion of the process. Uh, and again, this process will afford us the ability to take the fastest pathway to putting in gates, fencing and cameras. Um, as we uh. Quite frankly, implemented our package approach, we. Will have to remain in complete marriage and concert with the fair collection side. And we will be looking for the most opportunistic time period. As that project on the fair collection side advances to marry the two and to. Uh, make sure that the technology can talk. Now, I will tell you. Uh, quite frankly, that. If we were building this whole thing out in totality. Uh, addressing all of the technology issues, all of the things that go into this very complex project. And that we were going to flip a switch at the end of this thing and hope that it worked, I would have huge anxiety. Uh, I think this is a much better approach. It's a systematic approach. And again, it will. Uh, by uh summer allow us to start the uh the process of putting these these gates in it at at those four initial. Uh, location. So with that, before I open it up to any questions, if you don't mind. I'd like to defer my comments about the schedule or the phased approach. Uh, to Tim Nettler, again, who's our by state development lead on this project and also Mark uh Grossenbacher from HNTB.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I I don't have a whole lot more to add um other than you're correct. Um, that the way that the schedule is currently uh proposed is that we we have the the first. Um, design package of the the four stations in St. Clair County um delivered. Um, towards the end of July of this year, um, we would move into procurement through our. Uh, our procurement division, um, hopefully have a bid um opening in sometime in in uh early September. And then issue notice to proceed and start construction early fall of this year. Um, expectations would be uh a probably a four to a six month construction. Timeline based on the availability of the gates and the fencing systems uh along with any um weather. Issues that we may encounter during that that timeframe. Um. Um, but in all the while, um, the design team would be working on phase two and phase three. And and as you mentioned, it would be a cascade effect. Um, with uh the the next phase rolling in every couple of months thereafter until we we get to the the final. Deliverable of the the last uh seven, seven platform designs. Um, sometime in in August of uh twenty twenty four. Uh, but nonetheless, we'll have multiple contracts underway between now and then. In order to to start getting these uh platforms secure. Mark, I don't know if you've got anything to add to that.
No, I think between Kevin and and you, Tim, I think you've adequately adequately described, you know, some of the advantages to approaching the project this way and and. You know, the advantages to both the design team and to Metro and and quite honestly to the public as they start to see. Implementation of uh secure platforms at uh a a smaller set of stations, but can. Start to get a feel for what this looks like and uh and how it might operate. So. Uh, I totally agree with Kevin, you know, it's it's daunting when you think about packaging or. Packaging thirty nine stations and putting them all out at once. Um, this allows us to vet and work through a lot of questions on this initial set of four stations. Uh, work through issues that we know that we're going to encounter and haven't anticipated at this point. Uh, on a smaller set of stations. And then as we've worked through those, you know, the the solutions then apply to the other thirty four stations or thirty five stations. So. We we like this approach much better than than doing it all as one single package. So.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, this is the way that I'm moving this forward. Um, I'm I'm convinced that this is the right pathway. Uh, it would uh again yield the floor back to you, sir, for any questions that you or the uh. Um, commission, commi- uh commissioners might have.
Well, when you, when you speak about anxiety, I have some uh also. Um. But again, as you know, um, I think the commissioners um are behind uh your leadership on this project uh from the get go. A couple of things, when you talk about uh changing the phases here, what does that do to the bottom line? Have uh have we uh? Is that going to go up? It's going to stay the same when you're breaking it down like that? Have it, what's the thought of that?
Um, so let me, if I could defer that, uh, maybe move that question over to the engineering's side to see what their. Their thought is between a one total project concept and a phasal project as far as cost. And how we can address that?
Sure, I can take a stab at it. And Mark, feel free to jump in if if uh you think uh I missed it, but um. The, the number of gates and the amount of fencing remains the same between either going through this. Uh, phased approach or through uh, you know, the the original proposal of of having one major project let it at the same time. Um. It's hard to say what contractors will do with it, but you know, like I said, that that quantities will remain the same no matter what. Um, one benefit of this approach would it, it would open it up to more contractors, smaller contractors, if you will. Um, and thereby uh maybe generate a little bit more competition amongst the contractors and and. Hopefully have them sharpen their pencils a little bit when they're preparing their bids. Um, but right now, the. The the bidding environment is very complicated and prices are coming in all over um, all over the board has. You know, we've reported in the past several board meetings that the prices that we're seeing are are. Are very concerning to us. Um, but I don't think this approach would have any. Major effect on the cost. And if anything, hopefully we can uh have a little bit more competition and lower the cost overall.
Good. I like that. Uh, and that brings me into the uh. And next, first, Kevin, you know, I I support the the what you're what you're doing here because I think it makes uh makes great sense. But um. My next question to piggyback on that was, uh, is there any anticipation on having trouble with the bidding and? With uh what we've been seeing for the last year or so, uh, the cost of material and uh getting this thing out for bid, uh, any anticipation of problems like that?
Camera Mark, you want to also take that one?
Sure. Um. We we've thought about that commissioner, our chair, I'm sorry. Um. And our thought is, is that. Uh, this approach will will help us in regards to that. What we're planning on doing is. Um, once the the gate system and the fencing type is selected is that we would put together a a procurement package. Uh, that will allow us to preorder those items and get them on the ground here in St. Louis. To minimize any potential long lead or or uh. Stockpile issues that that we may see. So we're we're hopeful to get the the actual equipment on the ground in St. Louis. Before we even have a contractor on board and then just have the contractor go and pick up that equipment and assemble it and install it. Um, so we're looking at ways to try to minimize the effects of the the current um bidding environment as well as the. Uh, ability to obtain materials.
Very good. Thank you. I'll open up for any other questions from the commissioners?
Uh, I have a couple. Um. First of all, thank, thanks so much to the HNTB team and to to Kevin. Kevin, I would say that this is a tremendous amount of information to absorb. Um, and so I would strongly encourage, I I I would have preferred it to happen before the meeting, but some of this has to be. Condensed and and put in written form for us to look at. Because I I'm having trouble, you know, making sure that I'm understanding everything that you're talking about. So some kind of report to the board would be very helpful. And if we're going to do these these kinds of um updates. At each safety and security meeting, we really need to have the material written and and provided to us ahead of time. So, you know, I'm just going to put that out there. That's that's important to me. The second thing is.
And real quick, Rose, I don't mean to interrupt you. I I'll take full responsibility that um I I asked Kevin to put this together today because of. The importance of this and uh he did assure me that moving forward. That uh the commissioners would be getting the this stuff in writing prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, the the second question I have is, I don't have any problem with with any kind of a face or cascading. The the second question I have is, I don't have any problem with with any kind of a face or cascading. Construction schedule. I anticipated that. I will say, I'm curious about. How the stations were selected. I would think that the priority would more be about where are we having the most safety and security issues. At the stations and sort of phasing them as the primary ones. Now, I know from a construction standpoint that might have not have been. You know, as feasible, but I'm concerned that. Not only do we look at this from a construction project timeline, you know, the expediency of it, but. From a safety perspective, so why didn't you not look at the stations that were the most, you know, troublesome and and think about phasing them first?
Well, we wanted to begin with a phase one that would allow us to in the most expeditious manner start installing gates. This will be a learning phase for us as well because we will see what works and what doesn't work as we advance. Quite frankly, these four locations were selected. Or recommended on our part because of the ease of getting these done quickly. And putting those systems in some of the other locations will offer our engineering team some challenges. Which made which may cause a bit of a delay at those locations. So our our first phase. We wanted to be small and we wanted to be able to implement it quickly so that. We could get these gating systems out there. They will, they no matter what location they go and they will already have a security impact. Like I said, as as before, we'll be staffing them initially, so. Getting any gating and fencing out there quickly is is, in my opinion, an advantage. I understand what you're saying. And certainly as we talk about what what platforms are included in the in the next stages or the next phase. A lot of that conversation will happen, but this focused on what locations could we do quickly to get these systems in place?
And my final quick question is, given that we're going to phase this and the first construction. If I understand the timeline correctly, for these four stations will be completed sometime in two thousand and twenty-five. What is the anticipated timeline for all thirty-nine stations?
Yeah, so we anticipate that phase one will go out to bid again. September. And that could be completed in first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, all while. The additional phases are being developed and being pushed out, so. What what I what I can, I think, very confidently say is the final phase. The final phase of the total project would be sent out to bid for construction. Probably September of two thousand and twenty-four, which would shave a lot of time off of, I think, a very daunting schedule if we. Attack this whole thing in totality.
So let me understand this, the entire line will go for bid on in September of two thousand and twenty-four?
No, phase one will go, phase one will go to bid in September. Or actually in July of twenty-three, latter part of July of twenty-three. When that goes to bid, the design of phase two will immediately begin. It's about an eighty day process. Once that design's complete, that will go, that phase will go to bid, so it will be a cascading effect. So I'm not sure specifically on how long. I think they're anticipating four to six months for construction. On this, especially this first phase, but we're not waiting to complete phase one. Fully before we begin phase two. And so. The best answer that I can give right now is that I anticipate that the final phase. Would go to bid in the latter part of two thousand and twenty-four, so then, you know, six months beyond that, hopefully we've realized the complete build out. Four to six months beyond that. If that, does that make sense?
It does. So I'm, so I I'll make an assumption here that you can either concur with or or tell me I'm in error, but. So the phases for future station. Construction, safety. Platform construction will be larger than for each.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I just.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, so just just wrote to piggyback off what Rose said. If we could get, and I think we've already agreed to it, just to, you know, if it's a one cheater. Cannot analyzing exactly what you said, Kevin, on the timeline. And I I like the phase approach myself because I think one of the. One of our bigger problems too is with the public and. You know, they want to see that we are doing something, so the quicker that we can actually do something, the better. So, you know, I I agree with Rose, we should really concentrate on some of the the biggest problems. But I also agree that just getting something done as quick as we can does help with ridership as well. So anyway, but that's all I have.
I I appreciate you both. Somewhat assuming we have no security issues here on our Illinois stations, but I think we do system wide and I think we have to start somewhere and I. And the four out of our eleven here in Illinois are just have as much need as as any, and I think this is the right process. And I think Kevin's explanation makes a lot of sense. Concerning of the phasing and a lot of this information, Rose is in the hub. System, I'm on that page right now, so. A lot of the bullet points you might be seeking are there, but I think. Any additional information they can share with us beyond that would be useful as well. Thank you.
I appreciate that, but I have trouble getting into the hub because of my by state email address. That's the only one that can be used and I use other email addresses for some of the information, so I'll have to work on that myself.
Okay, any other questions? Kevin?
You hear me? I'm sorry. So that 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 is really all I have at this point. Our expectation is that we will move forward with this expeditiously. And we'll begin to show the the public and our leadership and stakeholders in the region progress again, I. I take full responsibility for this phasal plan. Certainly in moving this thing forward, I just think it's the best, the best way. To show progress quickly and and to implement security impacts quickly, so. That's kind of where we are at this point. And and again, I appreciate the the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to come in and speak to the committee. And I will take my remarks and make sure that I put those in written format and send those out to you.
I appreciate that. And again, I want to apologize to the other commissioners of the the length of Kevin's report, but I just thought it was important that. As we all said, we want to be informed and he is going to submit something to us prior to the meetings from here on out. But again, we're at a catch-up state and I think we all agree that Kevin was chosen by Mr. Roach to lead this. Very important project that we all agree to. So Kevin, we appreciate everything that you and your staff is doing and I look forward to all the updates coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Unscheduled business, Mr. Roach?
I have no unscheduled business. I can go into my comments if if you'd like, Chairman.
Good, thank you.
All right, my comments, I will make these very quick. So I would please push the commissioners to look at the monthly update that that Kevin is doing in conjunction with Ms. Hayden Yak. They do an excellent job on how that's going. Maybe we could do a better job of getting it out to you, but I would, I'd point to that as a highlight. Our goal is that that goes out every single month, this very, very vastly complex project. Along with some supplementing that with several comments that were made today. We'll be sure to get those communications done more thoroughly. But I want to emphasize to everyone, as much as we turn our eyes to MetroLink expansion, obviously in Illinois and also contemplating Northside, Southside. All of which is moving very, very well, a lot of attention in DC and so on. We are focused like a laser on this project because it is so very important to how we are changing transit. I meet very regularly with with Kevin and Andrew about it and I am part of this meeting was that emphasis. As a matter of fact, as we are moving forward on some of these larger, especially the expansion of the MetroLink system, I just would like to tell the commissioners one story. Obviously, we're having large engineering firms come to us and solicit me for those pieces of business. But in these conversations, when I'm talking to vice presidents, regional vice presidents of firms. Like HNTB and like Jacobs Engineering and so on. When they come in and we have that conversation, what is the subject of that conversation? A lot of times it is this project. This is a fifty-six million dollar project, but it will change. Hundreds of millions of dollars of investment. It's very interesting that the. The nation is looking at what we are doing in St. Louis associated with this project. So I just want to assure the commissioners that we realize how important it is. We are concentrating on it. I'm glad you could see this professional team who is working every single day on this project. We will keep that vigilance up. And we will be moving things forward. We do also have to bring those wins out. One of those wins to the public is the real-time camera center. Which this team's been been instrumental in, I I, we will take. Pictures of that and get that out to the public because in particular, our private sector investors really wanted to see these camera investments. Just to get an idea of the scale, we have roughly eight hundred closed circuit TV cameras on the system right now. By the completion of this plot project, that number will probably be closer to fifteen to sixteen hundred cameras. So we are changing completely this whole orientation and this investment in that kind of asset. And I think as Kevin very eloquently stated, we are layering these projects so that they work together. This camera system will work together with our fair system. Our fair system will work together with our gating system. It will change who we are, but we need the investments. And attention of both this board, but also we need all of these professionals on the Zoom today. We will need them working very hard. I think they are doing that and I'm very proud that this project is moving forward, but we are going to have to stay vigilant. Chairman, that concludes my remarks and thank you.
Very good.
I I I apologize, yes. Emerson Park is having a ribbon cutting in in Illinois on this fabulous investment. I have sent a invite out to all the commissioners to attend that. Of course, I will be there along with our partners in in Illinois to cut that ribbon. So I want to reiterate the date on that, which I will look up and I'm sorry, you caught me flat-footed.
While you're doing that, Kevin, I had one other question to follow up. I had a note here. Under the safety and security, the code of conduct that was talked about several meetings ago. Has there been any positive feedback on that on that? How's that going?
The 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 ride and abide policy that the board approved a couple of years ago has been a great tool. It is a. It is a a program that allows us to issue a no trespass warnings to individuals that have. Quite frankly, profoundly. Been a disruption on the system and so you might have seen a news story on the in the Post Dispatch. I think I referenced it. That was done, but it has been a, it has been a great tool, a very positive thing for us to be able to impact. Some of some significant issues and so we look forward to continuing that process. I'd be more than happy to have a more detailed conversation with you about, obviously. The list and what the suspensions have been for, but I would strongly urge that we do that. In a in a closed or a private session.
I appreciate it. I just, I've been getting feedback on it and it seems to be working fairly well from talking to some of the writers, so. I think we have to stay vigilant on that also.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, Chairman, that that groundbreaking ceremony of this. Roughly ten million dollar investment by St. Clair County Transit District right on our transit line, which will include all kinds of security investments. Chairman Simmons will be mad at me, but his his efforts towards making that happen along with St. Clair County Transit District is tremendous. That is January the twenty-third at one thirty. Boy, we'd love to have some of you commissioners there on the Illinois side to celebrate that win.
And it's also going to house OCC, right?
That that is correct. So of course it'll be the secondary OCC two will be housed at that location along with several other of of St. Clair County's. Important ventures.
Very good. Thank you, Toby. Appreciate that. Call for a future board and committee meetings, Myra.
Yes, the next operations committee meeting will be held on Friday, January twenty-seventh at eight thirty AM. Followed by the Audit, Finance and Administration Committee on the same day. Next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, February seventeenth, also at eight thirty AM.
Very good. Thank you. The only item for consideration of the executive session agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October sixth, twenty twenty-two Safety and Security Committee. Executive session. If there are no corrections to these minutes and no discussion is needed, the board could proceed to vote without going into an executive session. What is your pleasure?
More moves.
Motion and a second to accept them and place them on file without the executive session. Roll call.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Golladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Wendeller.
Hi.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Very good. Thank you. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second and an all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close eyes have it. Again, thanks, everybody, for taking your morning to do some important business there. See you next time.
Thank you.
Bye.